Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take a roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Tietzschalk.
Here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Heeder.
Here.
Mrs. Pauling.
Here.
Just as a reminder, our mission statement, the Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success.
So, we're going to start tonight. We tragically lost one of our Northwest Knights this year, and Mr. Pollitt is here to provide a eulogy for Amari Kelly. So, I'm going to turn it over at this point to Mr. Pollitt.
Thank you, Mr. Yeater. Good evening, everyone. Amari's family is here to join us tonight. Thank you. We're here tonight to remember Northwest High School Junior Amari Kelly. Amari passed away on March 19th as a result of injuries sustained in an automobile accident. He was three months shy of his 17th birthday. Amari was an important part of our Northwest family. He always greeted everyone with a smile and kind words, and he was very involved in the athletic programs in and around Northwest High School. Amari's classmates remember him as warm and caring, a friend to everyone who was always ready to meet new people with a smile. There is not an athlete or coach at Northwest that did not know him, as anyone who met him was an instant friend. Our staff remembers him as being a dependable young man who took care of his schoolwork. He was always a respectful student with a contagious smile, who impacted almost everyone at Northwest High School. We will miss his efforts, his squad leadership, and his dedication to his teammates, as well as the positive energy he brought to anyone who knew him. His memory will live on in the Northwest High School community. Thank you. At this time, we do have a couple of things to present to the family. Last week, I believe, Mr. Watkins from Pleasant Run Middle School presented the family Amari's football jersey frame for them to display. I also have, courtesy of the Northwest Local School District, we have a floral arrangement for you. And then, the school received a letter from the University of Cincinnati Football Team expressing their condolences, so I wanted to present that to you guys as well. Thank you. We are so sorry for your loss.
Before we move on with the agenda, we'll take a moment. Again, on behalf of the district, we want to offer our extreme condolences for the loss that your family has felt, that has reverberated through our staff, our students, and our community.
Thank you so much. We appreciate everything that you've done for Amari's family. We are just so thankful for how we love him, how he's been coming to school, coming back to show his support, to show his love. And the baby that saw the love of Amari, that goes on his face, it's just true. That's my part. And, you know, how much Amari did have had on his friends and his future. And I just want to say thank you so much because it just helped us get a little bit more just a little bit, put a little love and support. I was there for my son. He was a great kid. I mean, very, very much. And Mr. Pollitt, he's kept the contact we need the whole time from the first day of having him till now, just sending his condolences and his love. And we just really, really appreciate that. So, thank you just me so much to us for you to take time out of your boardroom to honor my son like this. Thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. We really appreciate it.
If there's anything we can do to assist you in any way, please don't hesitate to reach out to Joe, or Daryl, or myself. Thank you. Thank you. Time to speechless.
Yeah. Well, from that somber moment, we will move on with the agenda to a special presentation where we're going to recognize our PTA Teachers of the Year. And one of the things that, when you think about our students, one of the things that makes us unique is just how incredible our teachers have relationships with our students, and how impactful that can be. So, kind of carrying that idea of relationships, I'm going to introduce Lindsay Creasy. We're going to celebrate some of our teachers who were recognized this year as the PTA Teacher of the Year for their building. We're going to start this meeting with our secondary buildings, and then in our meeting on the 26th, we'll recognize our elementary PTA Teacher of the Year from our elementary buildings. So, Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Yeater. As Daryl said, or Mr. Yeater said, we'll be recognizing two, or three, middle school teachers today and two high school teachers. There is one middle school teacher that cannot be here with us today, and so we are going to move that teacher from White Oak to our 26th meeting. So, we'll have the teacher from White Oak, as well as the principal here that day. So, as Daryl said, these are the Educators of the Year, but this year they started to call it the T in PTA, which is great. And so, today, we're going to start out with Corrine Middle School teachers. You're here today. When I call your name, please come up front. So, the first person is Mr. Chuck Jewell with Corrine Middle School. And I have the honor of reading the submission forms that were put in for his nomination. So, this year, the Corrine Middle School PTA unanimously voted Chuck Jewell as the 2021-22 T in PTA winner. Mr. Jewell gives his all each and every day as he enters middle school building, the middle school building, and is usually one of the first teachers in the building. He continues to guide students during these difficult and crazy times. He makes learning fun, and has been able to implement field trips once again into his students' education. It's a well-known fact that he genuinely cares about his students, and his students carry that with them for many, many years. Mr. Jewell's colleagues share that he's an incredibly hard worker, and is just an overall wonderful person. His love for his students goes above and beyond the classroom. Mr. Jewell can be spotted at the most, at most middle school sporting events, selling tickets and snacks, along with cheering on our cards. His school spirit is contagious. He's also one of the most welcoming and thankful teachers the PTA Board members have had the honor of serving. For the above reasons and so many more, the Corrine Middle School PTA Board is beyond excited to recognize Mr. Chuck Jewell as this year's T in PTA Award winner. Please join me in honoring him as this year's winner.
Mr. Jewell is also a great dodgeball player.
Fun fact. I love it.
He lost, he lost a bet, and, and, and lived up to it, and bought Chick-fil-A for all the students, and they've been talking about it ever since.
I love it. Up next, we'll have Mr. Tim Castleman. Tim is a teacher at Pleasant Run Middle School. Mr. Castleman has been instrumental in our efforts to create a positive culture both in and out of the classroom at Pleasant Run Middle School. Tim's ability to create meaningful academic experiences and connect with each student has been a blessing for our students in his charge. He seeks opportunities to connect through conversations, one-on-one instruction, and being present at after-school activities. Though the pandemic has certainly made it difficult to connect at times, however, Tim has sought opportunities to make sure he is present at sporting events, PTA events, and as a Pleasant Run Middle School teacher leader. Please join me in honoring Mr. Tim Castleman as Pleasant Run Middle School's T in PTA winner. Next, we will honor Katie Castor with Northwest High School. Katie Castor has been a leader and impactful educator since she stepped into Northwest High School five years ago. Her dedication to her students and to her coursework is evident in all aspects of her job performance. She's been a member of the freshman English team, served as the English Department Chair on the Building Leadership Team, helped to make and to formulate our new study skills curriculum, and was a vital member of the group rewriting the learning targets for the English Department. She has also taken the challenge of teaching the AP curriculum in her brief time at Northwest, doing extra PD and conferences to bolster her skills and curricular ideas. She has even furthered her education, as she already had her master's degree in education, by working towards another master's degree in English, so she can offer our students a college credit plus option. Even with all of this on her plate, she still manages to volunteer at her children's school, and will be a leader in their booster program for the coming years. There's not a program Katie won't take on, a challenge she won't meet, or a student she will not inspire as an educator. As junior student Sierra Goldick states, Ms. Castor is greatly invested in all of her students, and cares deeply about providing them with a good education. Whenever you have a question, she goes out of her way to make sure you understand the content. She's extremely dedicated to creating an environment that is conducive to the learning of every student that walks into her classroom. She's a, a great teacher, and an even better person. Northwest is very lucky and very blessed to have this fine educator as a colleague, teacher, and a friend. Please join me in honoring Mrs. Castor as Northwest High School's Teacher of the Year. And last but not least, we'll have Mr. Jacob Page with Corrine High School. Well, hopefully, we can have Mr. Page on the May 26th. We're at the May 26th meeting, so we'll take some time, and if he's available to be, to be here then, then we will honor him at that time. I'd like for all of our teachers to stand one more time for me, and I'd like for you all to join me in giving them a round of applause. Congratulations. If you meet me in the hallway, we can take a photo, and your principals can meet with you as well.
That brings us to Student Achievement Liaison Report.
I'd like to recognize the Northwest High School summa cum laude graduates, Christopher Harmon, Lindsay Rorig, Luke Chapin, Abigail Sears, Nia Martin, Amber Marquette, Cara Pacini, and Ethan Hang. And from Northwest High School, we have some graduates enlisting in the military, Kevin Braxton in the Navy, Alexandra Martinez-Cambrone Navy, Gabrielle Broaddus in the Army, Leonardo Martinez-Artega in the Army, Dante McKinney in the Army, Nick Moore in the Army, which is, he's going to the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, Austin Smith Army, and Keaton Berry Army National Guard. And we have two Northwest High School graduates earning an associate's degree, Luke Chapin and Amber Marquette. And our prom king and queen for Northwest was Nick Moore and Shamia Harshaw. And Mr. and Ms. Northwest is Miles Blackwell and Nia Martin. At Corrine High School, our summa cum laude graduates are Kylie Burke, Landry Danielson, Donald Fox, Hannah Gilbert, Olivia Hyble, Olivia Keenan, Hunter Kirk, Cyrus McCain, Kiara Petroselli, Cadence Pierce, Rebecca Siner, Tim Smith, Paige Smith, Hawa Sau, Elijah Thacker, Catherine Vu, and Corbin Zint. And our CHS graduates enlisting in the military is Sierra West in Army National Guard, Bamala Damal Army National Guard, Kamala Abdul Wahid Army National Guard, Nishal Darji Army National Guard, Javeen Subadi Army National Guard, Malaya Carson Navy, Cheyenne Farmer Navy, Nick Henrock, or, Heronak, United States Marines, and Cardea Lane in the Air Force. Our prom king and queen, king is Jason Young, and queen Kamala Abdul Wahid. And Mr. and Ms. Corrine is Zaire Anderson and Hannah Gilbert. So, congratulations to all of those students. And then, next, we have Mr. Joe Pollitt here, and Sean Ryan, to talk about a field trip and introduce their students.
Good evening again. We have some students here to do most of the talking. Friday, April 1st, we had the opportunity for our anatomy and physiology classes from both Corrine and Northwest to go to Northern Kentucky University for a STEM field trip. If you want to advance the slide just once, please. There were 10 sessions, and students were kind of assigned at random, so every student got two of the 10 sessions. We were able to represent the information from all 10 sessions here in our presentation. Joining us tonight, I'll introduce from Northwest High School Junior Alexandra Keys. She's one of our best and brightest, doing AP work, CCP work. She meets with Mr. Yeater on his superintendent student advisory committee. So, Lexi will share some of her information with you, and also introduce Mr. Ryan and our students from Corrine.
Thank you. I'm just going to introduce Abby and Kylie McNally. These are two of our most outstanding students. They're seniors graduating. They're going to be attending Marion University on four right scholarships next year. So, we're going to turn it over and let the three of them tell you about the field trip.
All right. If we could have the next slide, please? So, that is a picture, just kind of generally where we all meeting, where they addressed us in the beginning, told us what the field trip was going to be about. We had a keynote speaker come in and show us, like, like her work. She worked on, like, animal cadavers, stuff like that. So, it was pretty interesting to see. If we could have the next. So, the first station was a 3D replication of a mummy. That right there is a CT scan of a mummy, and they named it Boomi. And with the CT scan, they were able to see the amulets inside, like, wrapped with it, instead of unwrapping the mummy. And with that information, they were able to create a 3D model and 3D print that. And they were able to tell us that, like, after using this to 3D print, they can now make, like, if you needed a replacement, like, for your knee or something like that, they could 3D print that. So, it saves a lot of money. If we got the next. So, for the second station, we had group intelligence. So, everyone in there knew from the beginning that they had to work together. So, basically, they had to act like molecules. An instructor played a voice audio of people talking, and informed them how to form certain shapes. The shapes consisted of triangles, squares, circles, rectangles, different shapes. And students learned how to communicate and work together to make something happen other than what they came in expecting. If we could have the next. Thank you. And the third is Euclid and Fibonacci. In this station, the students learned that Euclid's algorithm and Fibonacci sequence, along with, like, different relations to nature. And the students learned that the Fibonacci sequence is a set of numbers that start with a one or a zero, followed by another one or a zero, and proceeds based on the rule that each number, which is a Fibonacci number, is equal to the sum of the preceding two numbers.
One of the other stations was called Fun with Electricity. And in this station, students learned how to build circuits using little sound machines, batteries, and wires. The students learned the basics of working electricity in circuits, and learned how to use hands-on experience to work together to pursue a goal. The next station was welding and 3D welding. In this station, we spent time learning how to weld and laser cut metal. The students were able to gain hands-on experience and learn the basic aspects of how the welding process works. Students were able to design nameplates on a computer program, and then apply the program to the laser system. In this station, we played a series of games, one of them where we would choose a theory to stick with and continue to use it throughout the game. If there was a game, like, with two dice, and one of the dice rolled a two, and all students that were standing up and had pick number two with their theory that they choose, then they lost. This helps students understand that the way that people label them can affect the way they respond or act. Station number seven was all about neuroscience, science, sorry. And to introduce the neuroscience lab to all the students, one partner closed their eyes while the other partner helped provide the candy, so the partner wouldn't see the colors. We were then, uh, I'm sorry, tasked with trying to decipher the flavor of the skittle, ultimately trying to see if our brain associated the flavor of the skittle with the color. And after the lab, we focused on reaction time, catching falling items, and recording the time from when the item was dropped to when the item was caught. This was all to stimulate the brain. Station eight was called Design with a Mission. In this station, we viewed an introduction video about the International Space Station, and after viewing the video, we got to design our own trip to a planet with the goal of finding water. Station nine was all about climate change, and in this station, students learned about the potential impacts of climate change. And to demonstrate this, students performed a demonstration using a hygrometer to show the relationship between humidity levels, increasing temperature, and weather-related phenomena. The last station was titled Computers and Engineering. In this station, students learned about the components of computers and the multitude of devices that contain them. Students observed demonstrations of some of these devices, and they were encouraged to explore the field of engineering as it relates to computers.
So, that was kind of a brief synopsis of the 10 different stations the students got to experience over the course of that day. So, they kind of had the keynote speaker at the beginning, went to one station, had lunch, went to another station, then kind of a wrap-up session before they returned to school for the day. Do you guys have anything else to share, or any questions from the presentation?
What are you guys planning on studying next year? Do any of you know yet what your plans are?
I'm planning on studying nursing. I'll be a senior, but I'm interested in going into a hysteroism.
Awesome.
Nursing, too.
Okay, awesome. Well, congratulations. I know you guys have worked really hard all your years of high school, so best of luck to all three of you.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to Legislative Update. Chris?
Mark, the Ohio Legislature is on recess, so there's absolutely nothing to report.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, Thursday night was the all-boards meeting, where all of the 11 districts came together, and the board members were all invited. And they had the student showcases, where you could go in and kid whatever class they're taking, where they're, to do a presentation and tell you what they're doing, what they're learning in class. Thanks to Amy and Daryl for coming and had a great dinner. The culinary students were fabulous. Their food was great. And then, on Friday, we had the business meeting that, that we have set up, where you have business members come throughout the community and get together. And we had Sarah DeLong, who, she runs the nursing program for Butler Tech. And what we're doing is, we're going to partner with Cincinnati State, and they're going to build a building on our location where our STNA is, right up there off of I-75, the Butler Tech building right there. So, that, that's the plan. And what she said was, when they go to take their STNA, they got their first two years, the junior and senior, then they can go right into, right next door, to Cincinnati State to get their RN in two years, and it'll save them about $9,000, and save them over six months of time, and they can go right into that. So, that's the plan on getting their, their RN, you know, that, through Cincinnati State. And then Superintendent John Graff got invited to go see President Biden speak up in Hamilton. And Senator Portman was there, Senator Brown was there. Senator Brown afterwards was talking and getting interviewed, and he said, "For all the manufacturing companies that were there, you know, we need to get on board and get these people trained in that." And he goes, "And Butler Tech's going to train these people." So, that was a nice feather in the hat for Butler Tech, so they got a nice shout-out from Senator Brown. So, but other than that, that's it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Are there any reports from any employee organizations?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak for just a few moments. Just want to talk a few minutes about the math adoption discussions again. First of all, I'd like to thank you truly for coming out this past week and introducing you up today, correct? She met with all the elementary teachers from grades two through five to discuss the math adoption, listen, take feedback, notes, questions, and so forth, with all different grade levels from all the elementary schools. So, that was very well received. So, appreciate the time for that. I know that took a lot of time. Then, early last week, Angie Smith, our VP, and I sat down, we said, "We need to, we want to poll the people, all the teachers," and I sent a copy to the board and to Mr. Yeater, the questions that were going to be asked. And they were pretty straightforward, whether you polled the program, didn't poll the program, what you liked about the program, didn't like about the program, voted yes, voted no type thing, between the Intu Math and the IM, or the two, the two programs. So, I had the results here, and if you want to give each copy of the, of the results, and then the feedback from the teachers gave, some, some lengthy description as to why they liked one program versus the other, and so forth. So, what do you have to say about now? Some color graphs.
Thanks, sir.
Once again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Smith, because she did a lot of, a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. Once again, I'd like to thank, um, Mrs. Smith, because she did a lot of, uh, welcome, um, a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. Just, just a quick, uh, quick little summary. You guys can read those all, the ledger and so forth, but. So I believe there was a 42 teachers that piloted, 44, Brenda, is there?
Forty-four is what I.
Forty-four. So 28 out of the 44 that piloted did respond to the survey, um, so that was decent. And then we sent out to anybody, even the people that did pilot it, had a chance to, to vote, speak out and so forth. Um, a lot of them got feedback. They, you know, sat through the meetings, they looked at the materials, talked to their colleagues and math specialists. So basically, bottom line is, the piloting teachers, 78.6% of them chose the Intu program. And then for the non-piloting teachers, 82.1% of the teachers chose the Intu Math program. Those were their choices. Like I said, there's, uh, people's, uh, comments, you know, for I M, for Intu, whichever they chose, you know, good, bad, or different, so. Any questions?
We'll read over this, Dave.
Please?
We'll read over this.
Okay.
There's a lot here.
Yeah, there's, oh, there's a lot there.
Dave, thanks for putting this together.
Okay. Well, I'd say another thank, um, Angie Smith, she did a lot of the behind-the-scenes work for, um, for us, so I appreciate that, too.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, next is community, communications. Uh, we didn't receive any this week, so we'll move on. Uh, that brings us to the approval of superintendent consent items.
So tonight is actually a lengthy one for the H R portion, because this is the board meeting where we bring all the contracts for administrators, teachers, and classified staff who are at the end of a contract cycle. So that's why it's so long this time. So in addition to the renewal of the contracts for the people at the end of their cycle, we have three retirees, 20 resignations, seven initial appointments, two change in status. And then again, like I said, the addition of all the contract renewals who are at the end of a contract cycle. The other thing that's on there that is pretty lengthy, every single administrative job description is on there for a revision. And I just wanna take a moment and explain why. In December, I met with all the administrators in the district and really asked the question of what is working? What do you feel you need to do your job more fully? And what are you missing and what's working well? To really just get feedback. As I reflect with my team, we are asking our teachers to facilitate teams of teams in our classroom. Our buildings are facilitating teams of teachers who are learners and growers. And as a district, we need to represent that as well. So, um, part of what's on here is a leadership definition that is really for me to move our district leadership in a different direction to be a team of teams. So this is really moving to a distributive leadership model instead of a, more of a top-down hierarchical, more of a collaborative leadership model where everybody is on the team. And on sub-teams that they will be, are heterogeneous in nature, so food service with, um, our building representatives, who are really focused on the big ideas that will move the district forward. So this is a major shift that we will launch this summer with our administrative teams to really understand the new expectation around that. But I wanted it in the job descriptions to really solidify it that this is the direction we're moving and the direction for the leadership of the district. So it really aligns with the same structures we're asking our teachers to use in our classroom, our buildings to use in the buildings, and now the district to use district-wide. It's going back to that core belief that I've shared with all of you in the past that in order for us to move the district forward, all arrows have to be pointing in the same direction. This is part of us aligning all the arrows. If we have a lot of people going different directions, we don't move. If we move everybody in the same direction, we take off. And this is setting us up to really start taking off. We also have vendor contracts. It is our annual contract with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for all of our, um, services we get from them on an annual basis. So that is on there as well as the parent project and some tutoring and Title I services. We have donations from the Monfort Heights PTA. It was a monetary donation to fund field trips. And then we have the Class of 2025 from Corrin High School, who is donating money to the Joe Bertram Foundation from a staff-student volleyball game. And then we actually have the adoption of a curriculum item. It is the Advanced Women in American History Resource. We do not have the math adoption on there. That will be coming on the 26th. Lori wanted to make sure she had a chance to hear from everyone and to incorporate everyone's input into the final recommendation that she'll bring on the 26th. So with that, um, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Some move?
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Did the administrators give you feedback on the changes to the?
Once I met with them in December, and I kind of tried to synthesize, what does this mean for us? And I literally, over winter break, had my floor littered with postcard, or like little index cards, like all the committees we have, and how does this organize? And I eventually just had to throw it all out and start over. And so after I kind of dreamed up this new leadership structure that's a distributive leadership model, I put it back out to them for feedback, and it had gone through several incarnations with feedback from the administrators about, what does this look like? Is this the right fit? Are these the right teams? So, yeah, there was collaboration moving forward. So it won't be, uh, it won't be a surprise this summer when we really launch, what does this mean? And how do we actually make this logistically work?
Great, thank you. One, one question about that real quick. With the contracts and everything with, in the change of personnel coming up, does it look dramatically different than last year? I was trying to remember, is there, are we seeing an increase in anything in one particular area or anything? Or is this pretty synonymous with?
It's pretty common with where we're at this point. Um, things will continue to trickle in. Um, our staff have until July 10th if they're going to resign or retire from the district. So we'll continue to monitor, is this up or down from years past? We also send out exit surveys electronically, so when people leave, we do get feedback from them about why they're leaving. So we'll obviously have that. We have that for multiple years.
Can we get a comparison of, like, say, last year, maybe the past two years in relation to this?
Yeah, we get to July and we have some things settle down, then, yeah, we can look at that.
Great, thank you. There's this David Ross.
Good evening. So for our fiscal consent items, we have our minutes from our special meeting on April 21st and our regular meeting on April 25th. We also have two then-announced certifications from St. James. This was for invoices for their, uh, network server services that they hire out. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to, um, adopt the fiscal consent items as listed.
Some move? And a second. Are there any questions or discussions? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Next, we have our resolution requesting the fiscal officer to certify the maximum maturity of bonds. So at our last board meeting, the board approved to enter into the L P program through the state of Ohio for Phase Two of our building proj- project. And so this is to start the, the next process, which is declaring the, uh, dollar amount of the project, the mileage, and putting it on, uh, the ballot, or requesting from the county to certify those things. So, um, we're going to certify that the maximum maturity of the bonds for 38 years has $175.8 million. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the resolution requesting the fiscal officer to certify the maximum maturity of bonds as listed.
Some move?
Second.
Any discussions or questions? That passes five to zero as well.
And then next is our resolution declaring the necessity of the bond issue, certifying the same to the county auditor and the board of elections, and submitting the question to the lecturer, lectors, uh, of the school district. So again, this is for the board to state that we do have a necessity with our facilities to file that with the county auditor and board of elections and then to place the issue on the ballot. And then this will come back as a resolution to proceed, once we get the information back from the county and the state. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the resolution of necessity as listed.
Some move?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussions or questions for Amy? And that passes five to zero as well.
And then finally, we have the Student Activities Handbook. This is to update it for our next fiscal year. Mostly it's, uh, updating dates, but it's also a focus on the collection of funds, uh, methods, and securing, uh, the collection of funds also. And that's for just informational purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then under curriculum, there are two informational items. One is the instructional fee list for next school year, as well as, uh, Senate Bill One required a financial literacy course. This is a resource adoption, and that will come on the 26th that will, um, supply the resources needed to teach the new requirement by the state for financial literacy.
Is that a freshman course then, or what's, is there a specific?
It's a high school course. Is there a sequence that they're looking at?
We will be offering it as a freshman course.
Okay.
There is currently financial literacy included in our government classes. So the students that are not freshmen but still in high school have that opportunity to get some information, but this will be much more in-depth.
Great.
And it'll be a half of a credit course, right?
Correct.
That brings us to the Gators update.
So just a couple of things. I wanna piggyback off of what Jim said about the Butler Tech all-boards meeting, being able to be there and see the kids perform their musical, um, pieces, their culinary pieces, their art pieces, and all the other things that they were doing. It was a pretty amazing, um, showcase of the talent of the students from our district as well as other districts, even though I'm partial to the things that our kids did, um, but it was a pretty amazing all around. Um, we do have two teachers who were honored that I wanted to call out. Northwest High School teacher Kendall Jossworth, she was recognized as a Preston Brown Foundation Teacher Appreciation Week winner. And she was nominated by, uh, summa cum laude grad Christopher Harmon. And we have our Corrin High School Butler Tech teacher Ray Frank, who was here with the robot, um, a month or so ago. He was nominated by Hunter Kirk and won the Preston Brown Foundation Teacher Appreciate, Appreciation Award as well. And Hunter was also a summa cum laude. The other things I just wanna call out is we do have graduations coming up. Northwest High School's on Sunday, the 14th, and Corrin High School's on May 23rd. And then.
Gerald, is it Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
It's Saturday, the 14th. Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday, the 14th.
Thirteenth? Is it?
No, it's 14th, it's Saturday. It's Friday, we have a Friday.
Friday, the 13th, Saturday, the 14th. Saturday, the 14th. Thanks for keeping me on track. And then I do wanna call out, we did have our business, annual business partner breakfast this past week. And it was a little bit different this year than it was in years past. In years past, we brought in our business partners and really celebrated the partnership we have with them. And this year, it was really a celebration of our current partners, but also, um, a way to bring in new business partners who don't know us and aren't connected with us to really find out more about us and how they could connect with us to support the mission of the district. So it was an amazing event that we were able to celebrate our current partners and really look forward to maybe bringing some more people on board. So that was a wonderful event, and I just wanna give kudos to that, and thank you to Lindsay Creasy and her team who put that on. And then as we turn the corner, and this will be the last board meeting before we get to the end of the year officially for kids, um, I just wanna kind of acknowledge that we are kind of in that end-of-the-year celebration mode. There's a lot going on in the buildings where they are celebrating the achievements of the kids academically as well as socially. And so I just wanna call out the fact that there are a lot of great things happening in our buildings right now to really celebrate. And even though this has been a very difficult year, and there's been a lot of challenges along the way, there is a lot to celebrate. Our staff is resilient, our students are resilient, and they have made amazing progress with sometimes insurmountable odds. And the fact that they are here celebrating not just the end of the year, but the end of a successful year with a lot of gains needs to be commended and commended for our staff who have helped bring our students along. So, um, as we approach the end of the year, I'm just acknowledging the celebrations, not just for the kids, but for our staff who have really, um, come through this year in a big way. And I can't tell you how appreciative I am of all the work that they've done. So, end of the year, a major celebration for a lot of reasons.
Thanks. Questions for Daryl? Discussion? Uh, Lindsay Creasy raised the bar for the, uh, business partner breakfast. That was, that was a really, really nice. I wish it could've been a little longer. I'm not complaining, 'cause there was just, it was, what was there? Uh, um, this is a guess, 30-plus businesses there? Something around there? That's my guess. Thirty-six?
She would've liked to have had it longer, but it was at Struble, and the kids had to eat.
Yes, yeah, exactly. And I was impressed with how high-speed everybody got in to make sure the cafeteria was ready for the kids. That was pretty impressive. Yeah, it was amazing. It was, with COVID, I think I've only been to one, and it was at Houston Conference Room, and it was nice. But this was really, this was, I left there thinking, this is exactly the kind of stuff our school district deserves right here. It was very, very high-end. Bar was raised very high, Lindsay. So you got a lot to beat next year. But you're up for the challenge. Thank you, Daryl. All right, that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Heather?
Nothing for me, Mark.
Mr. Detzel?
Just wanted to send my condolences out to the Kelly family, um, with losing Amari, like that net car accident. And it was great to see the kids, um, make the presentation. The two girls there, going into nursing, it's too bad they were a little bit younger. They could've gone right into Butler Tech and, you know, then through, uh, Cincinnati State, that's the, the plan anyway.
You would've had to taken both of them, because I don't think they do anything separate.
I, well, that's okay. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure Cincinnati State would take them both.
Yes.
But anyway, but that's it.
Great. Ms. Toby?
Yep, um, I would like to offer my condolences again to Amari's family, um, and just echo what you said about Lindsay. Uh, I've gone to probably 15 to 20 of those breakfasts, and this was by far, um, the top. It was amazing to see, uh, business owners and employees there who really had no idea that relationships can be formed, um, with the school district. So I'm excited to see where that takes us. Um, and just congratulate all the students as they finish up, and thank all the teachers, all of the staff, bus drivers, um, everyone who's made this year, uh, coming back, not really knowing what it was gonna be like, so. And thank you to all of you guys as well. Thank you.
Uh, yes, my, uh, heart goes out to the family of Amari Kelly and condolences. And, uh, congratulations to the seniors of both Northwest and Corrin High School with their upcoming graduations. This is our last meeting for the, uh, graduation dates. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, that was, that was so great listening to, uh, Joe share about Amari Kelly's family. That's just, it's, it's one aspect of education you really don't enjoy doing. But you do get an opportunity to see how everybody is a family when these things happen. So I'm very proud of how our district has come around, uh, his family and, and Northwest High School. Uh, Daryl, to reiterate what you're saying, my, my daughter's graduating this year, so I'm going to a lot of things. Man, you really see the success of the district at this time of year. Went, uh, went to the summa gathering, which I kept it together when I spoke. I was about ready to break down a little bit, but I held in there. I went to, I chaperoned the after-prom Friday at the skating rink, and I was so impressed with just how behaved everybody was. I did see the, uh, the sisters at the basketball machine. Uh, and I was waiting for them to hustle people, uh, you know, 'cause they're, they're beast basketball players. But it was, it was so nice. I got to see this, a young couple come in first. And this, this guy just was such a gentleman to his date. Uh, sat her down, got her food, and like, it was just so neat to watch. With, you know, we deal with a lot of stuff that comes to us to deal with. It was nice to just sit back and really enjoy watching the kids. And, and thank God that nothing happened in the two proms, you know? There's always the fears of things that happen with prom, and, you know, we had no incidents, no accidents, nothing, which is quite, quite a blessing. Just looking forward to the end of the year. Yeah, I think it is a testament to our teachers and bus drivers and all of our staff hanging in there to make it another successful year and come off the end of this mess that we've been through the last couple of years and see the kids thrive. It's, it's sort of like what I said at the summa gathering. They've been through things that I don't know if any other class, and I don't think it is any other class, that have ever gone to. And they still maintained what their goal was, and they kept their eyes on the target, uh, which is just awesome. Uh, that's a testament to our community, the parents, our educators, our staff. Everybody collectively is the village, and I couldn't be any more proud. And as a parent, I couldn't be any more proud of how both of my kids have come through our school district and become who they are, the young adults that they are, on, on every level, academically, as people, um, level, academically, as people, um, how they love other people, and, and they've learned that by examples set by the educators. Uh, my son and three of his friends, uh, went to lunch, I believe, with Mrs. McGee, and that's been quite a few years since they've had Miss McGee. That's the relationship that's formed by the students with the teachers. The kids all kind of were in different cities throughout the country, and they all met, and that was the very first thing they wanted to do, was to go to lunch with their, or lunch or dinner, with their educator, Mrs. McGee, which was, I, just speaks volumes to me. And that's all I have. Thanks. And so we need a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Great. And we're all in agreement. This meeting is done. Thank you.